The students first in the long term because we would be able to get, we would be able to affect kids all the way down to kindergarten and preschool. Because they would, we would be able to shut old, old, the oldest buildings down and get them out. And be able to, everybody would feel, be able to see an advantage if we built a new school. So I guess, to me, I feel like if I'm thinking of just the benefit to the students, that's what I would think of when I think of, but there's also other, other factors. If we, if we chose a location that was terrible, I, that would be, that would, I would say no. We shouldn't build a new school. I mean, if there was only a location that was a bad location, because we're not, I don't want to do that again. We've, we don't have good locations already for some things. And I, I wouldn't want to make that mistake again. But I want to think of the future for this community. And when, I've talked to several realtors and said, what, what do you think? You know, when you have to sell a house, it's difficult. It's difficult to sell. It's more difficult to sell if your property taxes are higher. But they also say, the first thing that families move, look at when they come to the community is the schools. And, and we have a lot of older elementaries. And if we moved the kids out of the oldest ones, it would help that situation. And it would, it would attract more people so that burden would be spread out more. In our community, we could attract good jobs with, as far as busing, all of the options that we've talked about, other than a new school, adding on to Edahow has been talked about. The exact same thing, it, it's the exact same thing. Busing kids from farther outside of their neighborhood. And, and if you look at a school like Edahow, it's not really in the middle of a neighborhood anyway. It's got commercial on one side and it has apartments on the other side, which do have students in them. But it's really only, I guess, across the street and then on the other side. It's not in the middle of, like Gate City, Gate City's in the middle of a neighborhood. Anyway, but so if the others, the other options that we've talked about would require the upheaval of the boundaries for to build a new high school in 10 years, or a new elementary school or add-on, all of those disadvantages are the same. So to me, to bring that up as a disadvantage of a new high school isn't really...
It's going to be there regardless.
It's the same, it's the same. Whether we build a new high school or whether we solve our problems in another way, it's the same.
Can I ask Sue a question? I mean, obviously, we know that if, to build a new school means the redistribution of boundaries for elementary and middle school. Is that going to be the same? I mean, are we assuming that the Highland, we wouldn't redraw high school boundaries?
No, we don't.
You have to.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a question. I mean, here, there's been this great renaissance of Poki High and...
No, we would have to redraw high school boundaries, middle school boundaries, and elementary school boundaries.
It wouldn't just be, let's move Highland as is?
With the new state law where you can go to whatever school you want, that does change things a bit because we don't, no longer have close boundaries.
Well, and then you build a school that's bigger, you might have more kids wanting to go to the new school.
We still have to have staff.
Well, that's true.
Have it there and so...
You might, but I'm just saying that whenever people say, oh, redraw the boundaries, it's not the panic that it was before because we don't have close boundaries anymore.
But there's still...
There's still boundaries.
Yeah, we do.
There's still, there are still boundaries. There are ways to apply to, to transfer to other schools. And if there's space available in the school with the staff that's available, we can transfer.
But up to the limit.
The limit, right now, the, the limit, I mean, Highland and Poki are both over capacity right now with the students that live in their boundaries.
Okay, so I have, after listening to everyone, just some concerns that I have or some thoughts. For the, I see a new high school being, you know, great. And I think a lot of people want that. But the issue they're having with that is that the kids that are in high school right now don't have, they won't have their facilities, you know, for two years. And then if we, well, two to three years, right? And then if we build a new high school, it's three to four years. So I think that's a big issue for people to vote against building a new high school because they want their kids to have that high school experience where they have their own gym and they have their own facilities. One thing that I, that is hard for me is half of the schools in our district are so old that I can't get into them. So they're not, you know, ADA, wheelchair accessible. So for me, that would be a benefit to building a new high school because then, you know, those elementary schools that I can't get into, you know, maybe I could get into. And also maintaining the older schools is that costing us more money than building and repurposing other schools. So I don't have answers to those. I'm, I'm like Heather, I'm really sitting on the fence because I can see pros and cons to both sides. If it were, if it were just up to me, I would build a new high school. But because, because of selfish reasons, because I'm in a wheelchair and I want to see, you know, the... I mean, there's just so much more accessible things that we could do with the schools that we, that I can't get into. So I would build a new school. But looking, trying to bring in all the information from everybody, right now, I'm just, have not made a fine decision. Anyway, those are some of my thoughts.
Just in this, last night, or night before last, a supporting option A was three people. Supporting option B, which is a new school, was 10. And as far as the letters, there are two more that support option A that aren't here. I mean, B, option B, which is a new school. But I guess what I'm saying is, I would like people to share their opinion more because the opinions that I've found so far are more people are in favor of option B, which is building a new high school. But I would love for more people to share their opinion because as of right now, that's what it's saying. Eight, I mean, three in support of not building a new high school and just adding on to Highland and 10 in support of building a new high school. And that's just only one meeting, but that was very well advertised and very, you know, anyway. And I, and we tried to reach out to the community and ask. And so far, the community is saying option B to build a new high school. But I, I, I'm not here to do what I want to do. I'm here to try to find out what the community wants because it's their decision, it's not ours. The bond election is the community's decision.
I suppose, you know, maybe the circles you run into because a lot of the people I talk to are not in favor of a new high school. What they'd really like to see is go ahead and build onto Highland, make it nicer. We even had some say, well, let's just redo it like it was, which really is out of the question. I don't think that's an option. But I, I have a couple of thoughts on, on this. If we build a new high school and we build a 2,000 student high school to replace Highland, which we can make a 2,000 student high school. We still only have three high schools. And if we were trying to build a new high school because of growth and we needed a fourth high school, I think that would be one thing. But to, to replace a high school with a high school of the same thing, or if we add a new gym or two gyms and a better auditorium and make Highland the high school that it could be, then that's one thing. And then if we build a new high school and we move Alameda into Highland, we still only have four middle schools in Pocatello. We don't have another middle school for growth. And then if we do away with a couple of elementary schools, move them into Alameda, we still don't have the elementary schools. I mean, maybe we meet their needs. But if we gain this growth and now we're out here for a, a big bond that a lot of people don't want anyway, and then we see a great need, like somebody said, kindergarten kids are going to start coming. We need two new elementary schools, there's no way we're going to get one. We haven't really built for growth. We've only shuffled things around a little bit and done away with a couple of old schools. And I don't, I don't see where we have, I mean, I, I keep hearing that we need to do this for growth, but I don't see where we're gaining any growth by doing it. Maybe we put a few more kids up to Highland than we can Alameda. But I don't see where the growth would come, where the potential for growth would come.
Good point.
I, I had a question. Now it's lost.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine because I didn't want to interrupt you. Oh, I knew what it was. So I know we've talked about that a high school requires, what was it, 60, 88, 60 acres?
That's what the architect that the board has selected used that as a ballpark.
So other than parking at Highland, what is it that we don't have there because it's sitting on 30 acres? Is it just because it lacks green space? I mean, what is it that's lacking up there because it is on smaller property? I don't know.
That is a great question. And I don't know his thoughts behind that number.
Yeah.
Certainly, again, if we were to look at some of that green spaces, Mr. Wallison, I think it was Mr. Wilcox, mentioned that there's that space between C building and what was D building. It's just kind of lost space. That in my mind, every time I work past that, I think there's an additional four or five classrooms right there.
Yeah.
And then going vertical on top of the pre-existing structure itself, I think there's an opportunity there as well. And so we have put quite a bit of money in renovating the field, the baseball diamond, certainly some of those campus and sponsorships. But then, I don't know that you would need a full 16 if you were to look at a new school and talk about, you know, moving students from the school to practice and game areas offsite. So to me, it's part, part of that is green space.
So...
Just for...
So if you were going to maintain those facilities as Highland High School and look at another site elsewhere, I don't know that you would need a full 16.
Right.
My understanding was that there would be sports facilities in the new high school, but the schools would retain their stadiums. So it wouldn't be a big stadium. It could be, it could be the space for a potential big stadium. But it would still have, I mean, we would still need a football field and a track and everything like that. We would still need that. But we wouldn't need to necessarily, at the beginning, spend all the money on a huge stadium where we could build, and we could build that later and use the stadiums that we have. But there would certainly be PE and practice and, and soccer would definitely work there and band and all those things. As far as the disadvantages to Highland, it, it seems like it lends itself to a middle school more because there's one two-lane road that have, for access to 2,000 people. And that's dangerous, in my opinion. Also, the baseball field is pretty short. It's, it's okay, it's okay. But it's pretty short and there isn't a lot of seating, which is fine. It, it's, it is what it is. And so, because that's the space that we have, it's, it's just difficult to find space for even green space. So the green space that Highland has left, to me, is really important for the kids to go outside and eat lunch and sit and chat with each other. And so to me, I think there is a purpose for a green space. You know, to keep the green space and not build just all classrooms so it's just building and parking lot. I think the green space is important for mental health and for being able to get outside.
But if we have 30 acres up there and we do the same thing on 30 acres, that's at least 30 acres of green space. That's a lot of green space for kids to go have lunch on.
So, so here's, you know, I, I really appreciate your comment, Jim, because you're right. Putting it in the way that you have described it of the growth, we aren't, we're just reshuffling what we already have. So then how do districts, I mean, is this about, should we be looking at building new elementary schools? I mean, how would you make that? Because at some point, we're not going to wake up one day and just say, we need a new high school. I mean, if that growth is eventually going to, or the middle school, see what I'm saying? Maybe I'm not making it as clear, but how do you just overnight decide?
I, I think we're all tracking with you, Ms. Clark. And I think really what comes prior to asking voters to support a bond or say, yeah, we need one, two, three elementary schools, that growth has to be visible. And I think you would see modular units. And we moved one from Jefferson Elementary because we started declining enrollment there, sending it up to Chubbick Elementary when Mr. Watson was the principal. And now we've seen that enrollment decline. I think in that three classroom modular unit, we used one room for music. And so, you know, perhaps that one will need to be relocated again. But I think you would see that sort of thing at multiple schools before you say, okay, now we're at capacity, or we're not. And so now we need to say, time for elementary schools.
And then you'd have the support.
Then you get support. So I guess I, I thought that's kind of what's been happening at Gate City and Seren. I mean, aren't there some school, no?
Taiheh doubled.
I can even give you an update as of today. So we held our transfer overload meeting today for this upcoming year. And we did have, we ended up with seven total throughout the whole district, seven total overloads, which are those students that, based on capacity, after we go through...
Seven students or seven classrooms?
Seven students, total, that we overloaded. Four of those were from Edahow and three were from Gate City in various grades. So, and at the other schools, we have plenty of capacity to move them into. And, and that's where we're at as of right now. And that's been our trend enrollment-wise. Yes, we have a couple of pockets, which we always talk about, Gate City and Edahow. But overall, we just are not seeing enrollment-wise. You asked, or talked about, you know, the individual that got up and said, we have a number of incoming kindergarteners. We don't know, we'll find out that information in the spring. But as of right now, our enrollment numbers are down in kindergarten compared to last year.
And I think this is stuff that we really, I wish Courtney, I know she'll, can read these notes, but this is what the community needs. Because, you know, all they're seeing is, oh, look at all this development that's happening in my neighborhood. Look at Northgate, all these, I mean, that's what they're using as their litmus test, that we need this. And they're not seeing necessarily, I just think we probably need to be a little more out there with that information. Because that's real data. You know, because I, I agree, I mean, I get all this excitement, look at all that building that's happening, but they're not in the schools, they're not doing the counts that you are. And, and that weighs heavily with me, to get me off...
And once we get firmer numbers too, we always come to the board and we'll present those. We'll start sharing those numbers with you. Right now, it's still with the transfers and registration. But overall, we're definitely seeing lower numbers this year coming in enrollment-wise in elementary.
Yeah, to me, this has never been about growth. It's about putting kids in the, in a better environment.
But I'm wondering, does the better environment...
We keep saying growth.
Right. So in my mind, I'm thinking better environment. Because the other thing we heard a lot about the other night was issues in Highland with, you know, water, with lights, mold, I mean, there are. So are there things that we need to put into this bond, you know, that are more...
Those things have been addressed, every one of those have been addressed.
Been addressed, so, and I know, you know, we're evaluating some of those other schools. You know, maybe that's more of the tact as opposed to thinking of a brand new school.
Well, and just to respond to your question about the, what do you mean by a better place? I, I mean, what I mean by a better place is choosing the very, very oldest schools. And our maintenance department has told us several that it would be good to just close them. One in particular. To move the kids out of those places and basements. I know that, I know several that there are basements with no windows. And, because I've been in one. Anyway, just to move kids out of those places in the, at the elementary level because then we would have space, we would have more capacity at Highland as a middle school to be able to then move those...
I think what I'm hearing is a new elementary school is more needed than shuffling.
But again, you're saying it for shuffling. It's, it's not for growth, right?
No, I'm saying, what, but what we're, our option would be is a whole, is just shuffling.
Well, it would, it would be for growth also because you got...
Also be shuffling?
I think it would be alleviating...
You have a bigger school.
Right. Or is it taking...
Do we have growth in elementary? We don't, we don't have growth in elementary. So the, so I guess the, I guess, I guess the frame, to me, that argument is exactly the same. Building a new elementary school gets kids out of the older elementary schools. We don't need it for growth.
And that's what I'm saying, I'm thinking it's a new...
Building a new high school also gets kids out of the old elementary schools because we also don't need that for growth. So to me, I mean, we've got this really big insurance money down payment that we can, we can choose how to use that. We can choose to put it into a new high school and then affect the whole district by pulling kids out of the oldest places. Or we can choose to put it into Highland, which I think is a definitely a viable option. But then we also don't move kids out of any of the older elementaries by doing that. There was one other thing I was going to say, I can't remember. I'll think of it.
So I've heard also the other night, there was some talk of that even at the high school level, you've got, in Highland, rooms are crowded. But by the renovations were produced, or you have more classrooms, things can get spread out. As Janie Gebhardt mentioned, you know, and we, this whole fire has just taken all of the steam out of the excitement over the Allstate building. But we're alleviating kids from that. Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah.
I guess my biggest thing with Highland is the access and the parking.
Yeah, that's always...
I just cannot get my mind around, how is that ever solved? There never will be...
Well, there potentially could be a solution.
A better...
We're waiting on that.
No, that won't be. You can never have access onto Olympus Drive because it was a federal project. So we can never have access onto Olympus Drive other than Fairway Drive going into Olympus. That will always be the same. You can't get access onto Olympus Drive anywhere else because it's a federal project and we'd have to pay that federal project all that many back for Olympus Drive being built. If we wanted access onto Olympus Drive from any other place, even if that property across from Highland, we can't have access onto Olympus Drive from there.
So I would say that it will be congested. But as the board will recall, we presented to you a three-phase approach to increasing parking and trying to navigate traffic a little bit better. And this was probably back in the fall, which seems like years and years ago. But increased parking, better traffic flow, that was the plan. And, you know, now that we are presented with different circumstances, perhaps this presents another opportunity for us to reevaluate that, especially when we look at the D wing itself nearly being destroyed. And so even with the balance of what's left, I mean, is there an opportunity to make improvements on that in structure and parking? And so, or do you start with that little section that's left and try to work around it? So if we, if the board determines that that's the option you'd like to go with, I think we will need to explore that a little bit more and see which is more cost-effective and which allows more opportunity for growth. So I just wanted to remind you of that as well.
Yeah, that, that reconfiguration of the parking lot, there was kind of pros and cons with that because it gets rid of all the green space and there would be parking all the way up to buildings. You know, parking lot like it right in the very front, it would be up to the, the front building and the right, on the right side of the entrance, the main entrance, that would go up to the front in the second phase, I believe it was, or maybe it was the third phase. And then it would get rid of green space, but it would be parking. So I, I didn't love that, but I understand, I understand we need parking.
And just as another little thought to keep in mind, Hope's Alameda High School sits on two city blocks.
Yeah.
Very limited green space, a lot of parkings around this building. And we function there...
Forever.
It's a very different, it's a very different feel, for sure.
Yeah, it is.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a city, it's a city, yeah, in the middle of the city. And there isn't a way to solve that.
I also, you know, and I, maybe I'm wrong because I didn't, I was going to look at and I forgot. But I've been up to Thunder Ridge, which is probably one of the newest high schools in Southeast Idaho. And I think they only have one main entrance and exit out of that parking lot. You're coming off Lincoln Road into it or come out of there on a... I realize Lincoln Road's probably not as, quite as busy as, as Olympus is, but, but they don't have a stoplight there, like our kids would have a stoplight.
Because they don't need one.
They probably don't. But that's, that's where they come and go. I, I'm almost sure, I, I could be wrong, maybe there's another exit entrance. But I've, I've been there about four times and I don't remember another place on it. And, and it's a brand new school.
Well, could they evacuate an emergency better than Highland? If we're to be honest?
That I can't tell you. Run out through Farmer's Fields, I guess. If they didn't want to take their cars, they probably could.
I had someone come up to me after the meeting and they live in some of those neighborhoods that there's, I guess there's a walkway. So you've got Olympus and then the houses and then the school. They can't even get across that road. They say their kids stand there forever, waiting just to get across the road, you know...
To be able to walk.
To, to get into the school.
To then walk to Highland?
Yeah, yeah, just on that road. I mean, there, it's, it's a, it's a mess there.
Yeah, it's a four-lane road and...
You can't get across it.
Well, we're going to have a trial run of that as we take advantage of the county's offer to allow our learners to park in that South Fairgrounds parking lot. And so, yeah, we'll caution them to be as safe as possible. And I think there will be, we'll have to adapt a little bit, everyone who drives that road.
Yeah.
Maybe...
How, how is the parking going to be? Is it, do they have to buy a parking pass to be over there? Or is that a unlimited...
Be on the fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds?
No, they don't need parking. Well, I don't know what Highland's going to plan on doing, but the town, the county's...
County's not charging us.
And maybe we could do something like an elementary crossing guard right there so that the kids can stop when it's time to stop and go when it's time to go.
Parking spaces were eliminated with the construction and demolition.
So they're pulling their fence in right now.
So we have lots of money.
Sorry. I should just...
Yep, you're good.
We asked them that today about moving the fences in. And the north parking lot where the teachers park, they're going to pull the fence as close to the building as they possibly can and just run an access road along where the green house is.
Okay.
The south parking lot, they'll probably get between three-quarters and four-fifths of their parking lot back.
Back.
They'll pull that fence in as close as they possibly can to the construction zone.
And are those the seniors that buy a pass? Or is it, or whoever gets to buy a pass?
That purchased, they're in that lot. So, but they do have, I think, I want to say they have senior parking closer in.
Okay.
By the cafeteria.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So...
But there is no cafeteria.
There was.
Also, one other thing is the insurance pays for all displacement costs. So if we want to make it a better situation, I mean, the insurance has to pay for anything that we ask for. Because I don't want those kids to have a bad high school experience. But, oh, that's what I was going to say earlier. The contractor originally said it would take three years to build a new high school or three years to redo Highland. So then that was, then they came back and said...
No, I, I thought...
Closer to four for the, a new school.
But still three years to rebuild Highland. So that, those numbers are not being said correctly. So three years to build a new high school and three years...
Four years to...
Four years to build a new high school.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, well, three to four years or four years?
They said between three and a half and four years.
Okay, so three to four years for a new high school and then three years.
Two and a half to three to, to build.
Now, I never heard the two and a half from them.
Depends on what month they had it at and when, and when we can get it started.
So I only heard him say three.
From today.
So three years from today. Okay, so three years. Three years or three to four years. So I think that at least as a board, I think we need to consistently be correct in the years. Because it's putting, it's just putting the wrong information out there.
But at the same time, we don't know.
We don't know for sure.
Well, we have to do what the contractors have said.
I mean, we don't know what the contractor's said, three years or four years.
Okay, so the contractors have said...
There could be delay in materials, there could be weather, there could be...
Yes, so the only thing we can do is take the professionals.
Yep, three years for rebuild, four years.
And I know a whole lot of professionals that are wrong on that too, so...
Right, and but...
I just don't think, I think we can throw, we can, our best guess, right?
Right, your argument goes both ways.
Yeah, but that's not saying, I don't want to, I don't want to nail down a specific...
It doesn't, it goes both ways.
Our best estimate, you know, we, we, it's going to be a guess.
Right.
I mean, obviously, the goal, the goal would be to be done as soon as we can.
We have the same delays in materials... We have the same delays in materials, building either option. So that argument goes both directions. It go, it's the same for both. So it's either three years, but then that could be more, or it's either, or three to four years, but that could be more. And I think everybody realizes that. And the contractors especially are the ones who realize that, who made this estimate to their best guess based on availability of materials and, and labor and all of that. So as long as we are consistent, it's three years.
Or four years, is what the contractor said.
Three years or three to four?
No, it said three and four.
Okay, so three or four?
Yeah.
Well, three and a half is different than four. If you want to say something, use your mic. Anyway, so that's what, as long as.
Yep, but like I said, until we get a decision.
Right.
Yep.
So we can be consistent in saying that rebuilding Highland will be three years, building a new school will probably be four.
Up to four.
Yep, okay, up to four, okay.
Well, I'm.
Three and a half to four.
They said three to four. Three for this, three for this one, four for that one.
Okay. Okay, that's still.
Okay, I have a question about, what was said about if we build a new gym at Sentry? And the bringing in tournaments, is that right, from Boise? That we could be able to hold down here, maybe?
Right, so after participating in some state tournaments and being at Boise and watching how they take that whole seating and move them around those high schools, it became very apparent to me that we don't have the facilities here. That's why we've never been invited to do that. Adding this new gym at that capacity, you know, for 4A wood in conjunction with Poki, in conjunction with what Highland has, allow us to bring that tournament here. And it's a best guess, you know, I'm trying to compare what I see in Boise and, and those types of things. And we've had no conversation with ISU, but obviously, when you start into the championship part of the bracket, then we would probably have negotiations with ISU on Reed Gym.
And which sports? I mean, because that also came up.
It is, so it would definitely take care of basketball and volleyball.
Okay, so basketball would be.
But before A.
For, and we could house 5A as well, it's the same amount of tapes.
We could house 5A.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there's no doubt in my mind that we could be competitive with the Boise area for that. The other thing that has really changed in the last eight or 10 years, again, my opinion, but years ago when I was involved with the wrestling and it was always here, and then Boise got into that and we're back and forth, one of their big concerns was we didn't have enough rooms. And as you've noticed, on that Clark Street exit, we have built, the, the community has built a ton of hotel rooms. And so when we do host wrestling here, that's not a concern. I don't hear that from the patrons, we have plenty of rooms. So the people around us are getting us really close where we could get competitive and bring Boise this way. Which, you know, that's a nice injection of money into the community. But I can also tell you, looking at my budget, traveling to Boise all the time is a big endeavor for our district. It would be nice to see the other part of the state spend some money and come to us. It balances our budgets a little bit. So that was one of the things that I shared the other night, looking at that big vision of what we could do. You know, we work in conjunction with Parks and Recs, we're constantly leasing fields and leasing gyms. And I was really excited to see what the MECC has planned. And, you know, visiting with them, their list of, oh, please let us, please let us. And, you know, again, it's gonna give us another gym, a gym that will be a gym within our city to share back with the community. So that was the idea.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, a lot to think about for sure, board members, for moving forward. What will help you, from the administrative side of more information? What do you need from us to prepare to make a decision? And second to that would be, I would love for you to, once you have thoughts about anything else you need, then for us to, I'll set a date that we can take action on this and get us moving forward.
The last letter in our, in our packet refers to the same issue that I know Michelle has talked about and, and so many people here have talked about, that instead of having three years for the rebuild, having four years for a new high school, where will they be in the meantime? I think maybe we should address that a little bit more. And maybe help the community know where will they be, because they, they appear homeless. But we do have places secure for them, and I, I don't want them to feel. Yeah, I don't want them to feel that they're homeless, but also, any costs that are associated with this, including busing, even if we were to build a warehouse, that takes six weeks, that is insurance. Everything that it takes for displacement for the student, if we don't have a place for them, the insurance has to pay for a place for them, right? That's what we.
I, I don't know about building the warehouse, that, that's, that's a new one.
Whatever it takes to get a place for them.
Correct. So right now, we have, we have redone our gateway building and moved our weight room and our, some of our PE classes over into that building. We are leasing.
And do you feel that that's gonna work and that's gonna?
It'll work for the next three years until their weight room gets built.
Okay, so that's, that's.
Yep.
That's solved, okay.
Yep. We are leasing from Calvary Chapel two spaces, three spaces. One for choir, one for band, and one for our dance team. And.
Orchestra?
Orchestra, also, yes, thank you. And orchestra will be using, sharing the space with band, which they've always done. And then we are leasing the Princeton Building over by Franklin Middle School. And that will house our wrestling program and our cheer program, leaving them, they had a nice gym in that building. And that will leave a nice space for all that.
And those are both before and after school, so that works.
Correct, correct. Yes, and lots of storage over there, because that was some of the space that is, was destroyed. And so we have a lot of space for storage. And then the other place, we were already moving our Vet Tech program from Highland to our new PV Tech building. And that is happening, and so we didn't need to have a space for that. Our trainers that were in also in that D Wing are moved over to the Gateway Building also, I forgot that one. And then the other place that's in that building is our wrestling program. And our wrestling, sorry, not wrestling, welding.
Welding.
I've said it three times now. Our welding program, and they are actually going to ISU's old welding shop for the rest of this year. And the plan is to build their new welding facilities at PV Tech before the beginning of next school year.
So that'll be in their home.
Yes, so they will be moving back to their space.
So if you had to count how many students are in those particular programs compared to the whole student body?
Okay. So it, so it's deceiving, because there's five classes or four classes of those.
Okay.
And all the kids. So any one time, there's about fifty band students, fifty choir students, twenty rest, welding, welding students.
So maybe a hundred and fif, two hundred.
No, but then all the weight training classes.
I'm just saying, for, for one, for one class, there's two hundred.
Right. So I guess the, the only comment I would make in response to, and I know we don't have Highland administration here. You know, one of their comments that they've made multiple times is how disruptive this is gonna be, especially to the incoming freshmen that will never have a high. I think that's also important for people to realize that it's, it's, if your child is not involved in some of those programs, they will not have a different experience, other than construction being on-site, I mean.
No, their, their home games and, none of their gyms, they won't have any home games in their own gym.
In their own gym, correct, it'll be.
They will, it will be outside and so the extra.
But at the end of the day, they're in a classroom, there is a cafeteria, they're, they can drive to school, there's a lot of activities. It's, it's still gonna be a pretty good high school experience.
And we're gonna be running busing back and forth to Calvary Chapel hourly.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and Calvary Chapel is like two minutes on a bus.
It's two minutes on a bus.
Two minutes on a bus. So, so the, in, during the school day, that's the farthest that they have to travel, is two minutes.
Correct, other than the kids that are going to PV Tech.
But that's a.
But that's, that's a choice.
And that would be something they'd be doing regardless.
Correct.
That's a choice, because it's a.
That is correct.
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a tech.
So I, again, I think there's some messaging that is kind of being distorted a little bit.
Right, because.
And I appreciate that they, you know, that they feel that, but I think our students are gonna be very well taken care of.
Absolutely.
Yes, and, and also using that as, I mean, using that as a big, you know, thing to be not in favor of a new high school isn't really as big as it might seem, because it's three years. Even if we're rebuilding Highland.
Correct.
It's three years. But they have a home, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not what it was.
Right.
And it's not what we would want.
Correct.
It's destructive, but it's not interactive.
Right, but during the school day, the most, the farthest they will travel is two minutes.
No, not, we have our welding students, so we'll be traveling to ISU.
Oh, yes, but that, they will be traveling to PV Tech.
The following, the following year, they would be traveling to PV Tech anyway.
Yes, but that's just the option.
You are correct.
Right, but our core classes won't be offsite at all. It'll just be our band choir.
Our music, our music classes.
Music program, and then all of the rest of the, of the classes will be onsite. Besides the PV Tech and band choir.
Orchestra.
Will the band kids be able to keep their instruments at Calvary?
Yes.
They don't have to flip their instruments around all of them?
Correct, we're building storage there for them.
Where will Highland play their basketball, volleyball?
Come up and.
Yeah, Tanya.
Can you field any of those other questions?
I, I think the events themselves, choir, band concerts, drama, th- those things are really gonna be felt. The class assemblies, they can't be held at Highland.
Okay.
Even in the small gym. So you're gonna, that experience in itself, which is our fondest memories, is what's gonna be affected.
Okay, that's good to know.
And we have made adoptions and we will work together. But the longer, especially utilizing Pocatello High School, I'm not sure if you're aware, but next year, Pocatello High School will be 5A and their competition will be Highland and they'll be in the same gym. So they will have the home court advantage.
Always.
Always. So it's those feelings that, that bring the community together, that represent a school that burnt down.
And we can't do.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that's totally, that's another.
So the classroom atmosphere, you're absolutely right, but if you think about the events, the band concerts, and, and I'm not against a new school, don't get me wrong, and I'm, you know, but I am for getting these kids into their building and functioning as a high school where they have the best environment, you know.
I agree.
So where will those assemblies and concerts?
So if the weather's good, we could have them outside, but right now, we don't have the outside available until that field is done and so forth. So they, they have to adapt where they would have small areas to do, you know, single grade levels, not whole school levels. So we are, we are, we're, just like I'm having an assembly for all athletes with Positive Coaching Alliance, and we, we're combining with Poki. So we're putting all the athletes in the same gym, and they're welcoming, and it, it'll work, but it's not your own. And just to speak to Mr. Pixon about that gym, it is actually in regulations for IHSAA, your facilities has to be able to house and, with a certain amount of space of fans and so forth. And that's why we've built up our outdoor facilities, so we can really host soccer and football and things like that. But the same with indoor, that's why we've never been able to have these functions in our backyard. Is because we never had complete facilities at all locations. You have to have a certain amount of gyms and a certain amount of number of spaces for fans to fit.
So is the intent with the new gym design at Highland, if we, if we do it where it's at, is that, the intent is, the gym would, so we would, and then if we do what we plan at Sentry, we would have two, we would have two gyms that would accommodate?
Absolutely. And Poki's already there.
Already there?
Mm-hmm, with their palace in their, yes.
I see. So, but Highland, as far as the parking and the size of the gym, would, would be able to host 5A?
Mm-hmm, we, just, just like.
Or just 5A or four, or what would it be able to host?
So, it, it's the number, it's, the parking's not necessarily consideration in if you can host. And we would utilize the fairgrounds and, just like we did when we did middle school.
I think we need to be able to use the neighborhood.
Communicate, because they want, they want it in their backyard. They want to go to that event that's in their backyard, you bet. So those are things that we could definitely accommodate. And so I just want you guys to be aware that, yes, this, this is just, you know, during the school day, not as dysfunctional. It's the bringing those kids together.
Right.
And you know that, you saw that at their dance, at the prom and, and things like that, that's, that's huge.
It is.
At a high school setting.
Can we use Reed Gym at all, ever, even for one game or at all?
It's difficult. I don't know if you heard that, you know, we were trying to use Colterina for our first two football games and we can't, because they want the grand opening to be an ISU game, which I get, and I understand, and we're making adoptions and we're working through that.
But subsequent years.
But we don't, we don't have that freedom to always choose that. Does that make sense? Are you talking about utilizing their gym space for our games?
I'm just asking if we could arrange to be able to play at least one, kinda, I guess, home game there.
You bet. It's still not home, but yes.
Yes.
Yes, I think those conversations would.
More neutral.
Yeah, playing a Highland home game at Pocatello.
Right, and maybe even two or three.
Can we make it work? We'll make it work, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just telling you as a, a student athlete and so forth, coach. It's different.
Yes.
So, so I guess my only final point with our Highland administrators, utmost respect for them, is we need them to maybe not be the, oh, poor us, you know, because they can't have this. Let's really focus on the positive side of it.
Absolutely, and, and they truly have, to tell you the truth, they truly have.
It's just the two meetings that we've had, that's been the thing, you know, we've got to make this decision, because it's all about the kids. And it is, but.
Right.
At the same time, we need to keep that positive, that there's so much great things that the community has stepped up to do. I mean, I'm singing to the choir here, but that's just one of the best.
They probably haven't expressed those at the meetings, but they have definitely expressed those in our meetings outside of that.
Yes, I've seen that too.
And truly, it, it's, it's really brought us closer together, that more together has really been emphasized, absolutely.
So Highland's basketball, volleyball, are they gonna be practicing at the MECC?
So volleyball will, at the MECC during basketball season is their busiest season. So we have actually hoping the small gym will be done, and we'll, we'll use parts of the MECC as well, not, but not the whole facility.
Isn't the ceiling too low for volleyball?
No, they always play the volleyball there, right?
Are you talking about at the MECC?
Oh, no, at Highland.
In the main gym, it was, was a little lower, yes, and so they played their varsity in the small, but we don't have the small.
That's right, I remember, yes, I remember that, I'm sorry. Also, isn't, isn't some of the band and choir concerts gonna be held at ISU? Or is that not?
Yeah, I'm telling you, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure everybody has a home, for sure.
Right.
But these are the things that the, the kids are gonna miss.
Right.
So we haven't finalized that yet. The, the band, the band choir and orchestra teachers all have very good connections at ISU with their music program. And they are reaching out, whether it's Goransson Hall or Stevens Performing Center or Pocatello High School's auditorium, or Sentry High School's auditorium. They will be having their concerts at.
In one of those places, so they'll have a good place.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we've already talked, we've talked with the drama department at ISU about Frazier Hall. And they've literally said, whatever you need, we'll, we'll help you work it out, so.
That's so nice.
It may be we have to switch our dates, you know, a week earlier or a week later, but they're, they're absolutely working with us.
Thank you, that's so nice.
ISU has been a phenomenal partner with us.
I have another question, probably more for Doug, but I guess I don't know if I can ask this question. But I, I mean, I know we've come up with these two options. If we were to go with option A, do you include money in there for property purchase for down the road? See where I'm asking, you know, so that.
For a high school?
Yeah, so a future, so that there's, you start to build the reserves for property.
Because currently it's twenty.
Eventually.
Seventy-five percent would it be, would be for Highland and twenty-five percent would be for Sentry in that option A.
Right, but that's just a, what I'm saying is that because we knew that the two options, if option B did not include purchasing property, and, and again, I don't know what's allowed and how you, but see what I'm saying is, okay, so we go with option A, we get Highland, but knowing that at some point, property will need to be purchased for potential growth.
Sure.
Can you do that in a bond and then you put that money aside that can only be used for property? I don't know if that's.
It sure is, it is a possibility. I think when you start adding more variables to the bond.
Too confusing.
Without the knowledge of, you know, again, of. The knowledge of, you know, again, where is that property located? Is it next to my neighborhood, is it south of town, then you, um, the questions in people's minds are raised.
Right, unless inclined to vote for it.
I think anytime that you, you add variables to the equation, then it complicates it more, and, uh, people will question more about. You know, even the other night, I'll just say, um, there was questions about accountability and trust and transparency, and I feel that the district does an incredible job with all of that. And we, uh, again, I mean, this board sees our board bills monthly, you take action on consent agendas, we bring every bid, every proposal to you. People may ask, well, where are they located, and, you know, we can certainly direct them to all of those things. But, uh, ultimately, again, that might bring up questions about, well, are you just gonna sit on that ten million? Why don't you just use it to fix that elementary school you're talking about, or, or what have you, so that's just my.
I guess the only reason I, I bring that up is that if we do option A, tell me again the time, we did five year and, or no, ten and twenty years, you essentially could be pushing buying new property twenty years down the road, cause you can't have two bonds, can you? I mean, and property is not gonna.
Have a bond every year if you want.
You can have people vote for it.
But they have to vote for it, right.
There is a limit on how quick, you, you can't gather all this money and just sit on it for, I think it's close to three years, you've got to start.
Spending it, okay, and that, that makes sense too, I'd, you know, had to, had to ask.
If that was possible at that time before.
Right.
Whatever you'd like to decide to see put on the ballot.
I think my mind is more made up tonight now. I know we're not making a decision.
We're not making a decision tonight, right?
No, no, it is not for action tonight, and we would want to make sure that Paul was aware when you were voting, and that's why, you know, for, uh, this evening, if you would like to give me some direction so that I can work with Ms. Johnson and Mrs. Fisher, and we can put together a potential date for action, if you'd say, you know, we wanna do it two weeks, we wanna do it three weeks. The earlier, the better for us to try to secure, uh, put those numbers, just make them a little bit tighter either way. Then we could start with, with our bond council to prepare that, and we can start to share. I, I would say a little more detailed information, it also gives a green light to our architects to say, okay, if this is the direction you're going, we can start to put together some renderings.
Right, that also came up, the other, people wanna have a place to go.
That's the other question, I think that sort of looms out there, is what will it look like, what will it entail? How many seats for auditorium, for gym, and et cetera, and I think once the board makes a decision, then we can narrow that scope a lot and say, okay, here's what's in front of you, to the best of our knowledge, right now, with some projected numbers and, and, um, and, uh, like the cost and so forth.
But when we make that decision, will those num, will we have those exact numbers that's gonna be on the bond?
We, we will have to put a number to it, and, uh, yeah, because of the ballot language, we, we can always reduce it, but we can't exceed it. So once you determine which direction you wanna go, then we will use our bond counsel and advisor.
Oh, right, but I mean, when, when we, if we decide A or B, doesn't matter whichever one, that number that night, we have to have the number that night when we decide A or B?
No.
Okay.
It, it just means that the smarter people than us will work on the numbers.
Kinda like that's what he was saying, I think. Go ahead.
And that's what I was just, remember, I, I'd said, again, that, those, those two numbers could fluctuate, maybe ten, fifteen percent. Um, it's not until we get the, uh, the ballot resolution, you'll accept a ballot resolution that will contain the amount, the scope, you know, what do you wanna spend this money on, and then the bond term, you know, because that, and then, um, again, with our bond advisor, bond counsel, they'll, they'll generate the rest, you know, cause we have to disclose and, or estimate how much, uh, tax impact this will have and, and so forth like that. But there's a couple of key things that we'd need, you know, from the board to, to do that. So, so that number would, might get honed in or changed just a little bit, but again, we'll share it with you and, and make sure you feel comfortable with it. I, I'll, I'll go ahead and say, that my previous experience with this, the board said, you know, it was, it was a very small bond, but they wanted to increase it half a million. And they just said, hey, we're not running out of money, I wanna increase it half a million, okay, fine. So you say, we're gonna do it.
We don't wanna do Century again.
Correct. And I'm not saying we're gonna do that, but that's, they wanted that extra.
Corners there because you didn't have enough.
And it turned out that was what they had left over, so.
So I, I guess the only thing I would say for direction is, we do have to nail down a location, and so I guess we'd have to really, because they said, you know, one of them was, you know, you don't wanna make a rush, should rush decision about location. Well, um, if we don't find, I mean, it has to be a very, very good location, at least in the opinion of the community.
But I think before we go there, we need to decide.
Know is what options that we have for locations, maybe we could narrow it down to maybe three, at least maybe, in this, just because we don't.
They're going to, any developer, we get into serious discussions with you until you're committed to that proposal, because otherwise it's just numbers, and, you know, what, perhaps if there's someone who's interested in, in donating part of this, and would give the district a better deal than they would if they sold it commercially or for residential. And so I don't know that you could ever get someone firm up those numbers to feel confident about publicizing them.
I wouldn't say numbers, I wouldn't say numbers, I would just say what, what would the board, where would the board be okay with the high school being built? Because what, on the west bench, like, I mean, it needs to be narrowed down to, is it gonna be north of town?
But I think, Deanna, I think the board has to choose option A or B before we would even go that way.
I don't think anybody, yeah, I just don't, I think it's hard to find support, yeah. But I guess the support right now is, I guess, leaning toward option B as far as the community, but, but even without the, even without the location chosen. But I would love to hear more input.
Could you just put a survey out there that says, would you choose A or B and then do the.
Sure we could.
Charting from there.
Yeah.
But if we, if we did another survey to the public, I think we have to be exact, more exact about the location in terms of at least saying, we would want it north of town, north of town. Like, so that we, they know, like, where are you thinking, far away from Highland, near Highland?
I don't think we have a choice.
If we're gonna do a survey, I'm not saying.
South of town.
Right, right, would have to be. But I don't know that the, the public needs to know that, if we did another survey. But if we don't do another survey, we can make that decision without knowing that, so I understand that, we can make that decision without knowing that. But we can, but if it's the public, if it, if it goes out to a survey, we have to be more precise. Cause, cause they're not choosing, they don't know what they're choosing. If they say, if they say, yes, I want a new high school, or if they say no, because I don't know where it is.
If we went A or B, we would be, and we said, okay, we're building a high school. We can make that decision now, and then before we put it on the ballot, I guess we can get a better idea of what's available, right?
We could, I think then the developers would be more willing to talk to us. Again, because it's going to be a sale of their property, but they might be intended for commercial or residential presently, and so, yeah, it would be better.
I think we need to just schedule the meeting to decide between option A and B, and then depending on which option the board votes to pursue would determine whether we go.
A lot of things.
I think that's.
Cause I, I mean, let's face it, these guys are gonna be starting a school year, I don't, you know, you guys don't need to spend cycles juggling both options. And we need to pick an option to spend the cycles on.
And I, and I agree, the sooner the better.
Yeah. Okay, so we have our regular board meeting next Tuesday, uh, we could present it that evening, we could do, uh, I think we have some student hearings on Wednesday next week.
Already? These naughty kids.
Those are probably kids coming back.
Yes, we always end the year with, you know.
So are these kids from last year, or are these?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're probably from back into school.
So, you know, the last year of school. So we will be together on Wednesday for, I think we have two, two scheduled, so we could maybe start that at, um, three thirty, four o'clock, and we could do.
Got it on the schedule for three thirty.
With action on Wednesday, or we could incorporate it into Tuesday night, if you'd rather just get it done.
Tuesday.
Yeah.
Tuesday would be fine.
Okay, all right, so.
And you want to do that with the input you've got so far?
I do.
Okay.
And, um, as opposed to, you mean, putting out another survey, or? I, I mean, we know what these surveys have said, but I don't.
Yeah, you'll have time to review that, this will take more input, uh, and we'll give you the written copies, we'll try and get that to you ahead of time. I think in our previous, um, meetings, we tried to ask that you, those submissions come in twenty-four hours in advance, so you receive them in advance of the board meeting, rather than hand you a big pack of papers when you walk in, so we will do that as well.
On Friday, or Thursday?
Well, do we see twenty-four, forty-eight?
Twenty-four hours for the input, is that what you mean?
Yeah, so you'll get anything that's submitted by Friday in your regular package.
Right.
Anything that comes in over the weekend, uh, electronically, Renee will send that to you Monday.
Yeah, and include it in the addendum.
Okay.
And you have that.
That would be, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we'll schedule it for action next Tuesday.
Sounds good.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, back to you, and I think.
You had some public comment.
Okay, before, we do have one public written.
Do you want the submissions in by Friday, that's tomorrow?
Oh, gosh, is it Thursday?
That's right, it is Thursday.
So you do want, sorry, uh, wow, uh, do you want to take action on, on Tuesday night? All right, so, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, just distracted the ladies.
Okay, I, I do have one, um, request for comment, and it's, uh, Michelle Mitchell, and so we'll turn the time to her.
I'm gonna read fast so I can hopefully fit it all in, okay? Um, my name is Michelle Mitchell, I've attended most meetings regarding Highland High School since the fire started. These meetings, they're not bursting at the seams with concerned parents and patrons, I am the only one here today in front of you. Most meetings are titled Highland High School updates, and yet discussions have moved in a million different directions every single time. I've noticed that this time does go by, that you are losing community involvement and community traction. If you're Poki, any junior high not in the mix of these scenarios, or any elementary school not in the mix of Highland High School, then it's not your school and it's not your problem. Familiarize Century families with the realization that they are actually part of the equation, then maybe you'll gain more interest in option A. I don't think that Highland High School families that do support option B are gonna turn down option A if that is the one that makes the ballot. They want something over nothing. After the community forum, it should have been a sign, loud and clear, that this community would not show up to support the larger bond. With more than roughly thirty-eight hundred students in our three high schools and more than twelve thousand district-wide, the forum turnout had roughly fifty people in attendance. Please wake up, the community telling you nothing is telling you something. Throw out option B, get moving in the direction of option A. Option A is the more ideal choice by including two of your three high schools with Highland and their immediate needs being met first, and Century's room for growth and keeping our taxes lower as a better option. Your support to pass bond A by the numbers makes more sense. I'm confident the district and the board can creatively work out elementary and middle school scenarios at a later date and time. I will always advocate for what's best, in the best interest of my boys and their education and their athletical, athletic successes. I will show up here, time and time again, to plead with you, to make Highland your top priority until it's done, not just for my kids, but all of the learners at Highland High School, right here, right now, in this very moment in time. And to question what you're doing in the meantime, in between bond and rebuild options. The everyday for what you hope for is the most realistic high school experience. Are you prioritizing your high school, teachers, staff, and administrators to sure, ensure that they are getting the level of care and support they need? Are the learners going to be in an environment where they feel positive school cour, school, positive school culture? Stability and support each and every day. Sending them back to a school at Highland High School in their own classrooms does not solve the hodgepodge of what is their everyday school scenario. It's not normal or ideal, but you're talking about being years operating this way. If I may offer a suggestion, it would be for the board and district to consider an assigned high school, Highland High School liaison or liaisons. One person or a parent, peer, teacher group that talks to and checks in on all of your HHS students and staff to know how they are navigating this transition. As a freshman or sophomore last year, or a senior student who went through COVID and now this, what are they feeling? How are they coping? Are necessary accommodations being met, and how are they adjusting? You've heard from many people at this point regarding Highland High School, but if there are two people's words that should be heard above all others, it should be that of your Highland principal and athletic director both advocating for bond option A. They know more about what Highland High School wants and needs more than anyone else, please listen to what they're telling you. And also from a real estate standpoint, land for a new high school currently does not exist. I implore you to use your community's expertise in realtors and developers to meet with them, and they too will tell you to abandon option B at this time. You do not have the choices for that amount of land, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes this meeting, and I, uh, we are adjourned.
Second.
All right, I declare us adjourned, there we go.
So now, isn't it a move to adjourn a meeting and a second? Cause that's happened twice. Okay, okay, cause I noticed that last time too.